... and incredible role models for this community. So, I'd like to read this proclamation in full. "The City of Norwood, this is a proclamation and memorandum of remembering Helen T. Dracy. Whereas on behalf of the citizens of the city of Norwood, it is my privilege, it is my privilege to offer this proclamation honoring the life and legacy of Helen Theresa Dracy for her service to the community of the city of Norwood, Ohio. And whereas Helen Theresa Dracy and her beloved husband Charles L. Dracy lived in a loving marriage for seventy and a half years, raising a large family in South Norwood, and was the cherished grandmother of thirty and great-grandmother of twenty-eight. And whereas Helen Theresa Dracy was a classically trained pianist, loved musicals, was an amazing cook, was talented more than she would admit, and loved all of her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, and her community. And whereas Helen Theresa Dracy honorably served the city of Norwood on city council for sixteen years, creating the domestic crisis committee, and was instrumental in many actions that make the city of Norwood great today. And whereas Helen Theresa Dracy was not only a multiple-term elected member of city council bringing a perspective of love and compassion to our local city, she was also a member of Norwood's St. Matthew Parish Council and involved in many activities to brighten the lives of less fortunate. She did more. And whereas Helen Theresa Dracy was a female role model to not only her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, and potentially even as important to the community members that she loved with all of her heart. She was willing to put herself out in front and work to make the world a better place for everyone. Now therefore, I Victor Schneider, Mayor of the city of Norwood, Ohio, celebrate the life and efforts of Helen Theresa Dracy in a life well-lived, that has, has, and will continue to have an impact on the great community of the city of Norwood and all of the friends and family that she touched in a very special way." This proclamation will go to Councilman Dracy, who serves the city well at this time. And we really hold such a special place. The Dracy family clearly in the city of Norwood has had a special place for many, many years and will continue to do so. Matt, I sincerely feel for your loss, and I know the love that your grandmother had and the love for this community goes out to you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
We have three requests to address council this evening. When I call your name, please come to the podium. You have five minutes to address council. First, we have Mr. Tom Williams.
Thank you. I realize this is a little, probably one meeting late, but I still felt like I'm an obligation here to come and speak about this meeting, about the subject of 911 communications. Of course, I want to thank members of council and the administration for allowing me to address you on this matter regarding the elimination of the 911 communication center. E-911 first came to Hamilton County in August of 1988. A county board was set up to oversee the use of the system by the police and fire jurisdictions at that time. Many municipalities had their own systems, including Norwood. Through the years, several municipalities closed their centers, 911 centers, and merged with Hamilton County Communications. Today, there are only three remaining public safety answering points, or P-Saps, in Hamilton County, that is Cincinnati, Hamilton County, and Norwood. I joined the police department in June 1988. The police and fire departments still had separate communications and dispatching at the time. Police officers and firefighters would man these systems on a 24-hour basis. Most citizens at the time still knew the traditional numbers of the police, 631-1212, and Fire 531-5353. 911 at the time was just a small box in the police radio room. When a police call, when a call came in on 911, we would pick it up, get the information from the caller, and if it was a police-related call, we would handle it. If it was a fire-related call, we would transfer it to Fire for Dispatching. In 1989, police and fire emergency communications were officially merged into the system we have today. It was run by then-retired police captain Bob Bellman, and the first 911 dispatchers were hired. These dispatchers were trained and certified through the International Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, otherwise known as APOC, to national standards, as well as in Norwood police and fire radio procedures and emergency operations. They also received certifications through the Regional Crime Information Center, RCIC, which is overseen by a board of county officials, as well as representatives of municipalities, law enforcement, fire safety, and the county court system. That is, the Clear Board of Advisors. The city of Norwood currently has a seat on that board. Dispatchers have the ability to enter criminal records that were overseen by Hamilton County, the state of Ohio, and the National Crime Information Center, NCIC. These dispatchers were also certified, these new dispatchers, the same procedures, with the exception of RCIC certifications, which was done through Hamilton County. After Bob Bellman's retirement, the responsibility of supervising dispatch was given primarily to the police department. The fact that most of the runs coming in were police-related, and that dispatchers were also handling criminal records through local, state, and national systems factored into this decision. The fire chief and his designee, usually the assistant chief, had direct access to the supervisor in charge of dispatch to assist in matters related to fire dispatch portion of communicate, of the communication center. Any updates or changes to policies and procedures were distributed through the communication supervisor. Through the years, several officers, including myself, were involved in the supervision of that 911 communication center. The communication center has always been the lonely stepchild of emergency services in Norwood. With only a minimal amount of funds, the communication center was able to keep up with technology demands and remain compliant with all of the requirements necessary to stay in operation. The communication center is a vital part of our emergency services. They are the voice on the other end of the line when a resident or visitor to this city needs help. Like our police officers, firefighters, and every city in Norwood employee, they don't do it for accolades, they don't do it for glory, they do it because they are there to help the person on the other end of that line. Our communication center may be small in its operations, but it is still our system. It's Norwood's system. Our dedicated 911 operators are proud of that fact, too. The city of Norwood has always maintained a fierce independence, being surrounded by the city of Cincinnati. As Cincinnati grew around us, we maintained that independence through our city services. Even in those rough times, starting in 1980 with our first fiscal emergency, right up through today, we have always maintained that independence. We have fought with each other and helped each other through the good times and the bad, but as always, with each other. Some say, "I wish we could go back to the old days." Sometimes I include myself in that way of thinking. What we need to say is this: With respect for the past, we look forward to the future. We have a new wave of people moving into this city with a lot of new ideas. I'm not stuck on the idea of wanting to keep things the way they are. I want to show these new residents that Norwood is worth fighting for, and here is the reason why. I understand the need to consider this decision. There is a strong argument for it financially. But if our communication center closes, we lose a little bit of that independence that we are proud of, because now we have to rely on someone else to help us help our citizens. Therefore, I'm requesting the city administration and city council put on hold for now the closing of the Norwood 911 Communication Center, until such time that they can hear what the citizens and businesses of Norwood want, and what ideas, if any, can be suggested to keep the communication center running in a safe and efficient manner. From what I understand, there are funds in place for 2021. I would simply ask that everything be tabled until such time that everything has been considered and all options are, are all, are out of any options that we haven't seen yet. I understand Mr. Knapp is here, the man is excellent at what he does, and Hamilton County is excellent at what they do. But we are who we are because of what we have here, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Next request to address council, Mr. Brian Chu.
I'm Brian Chu. And something happened to me recently about two or three disarray kind of tickets in a row. To jump to the, to the third one, it almost cost me my life, was, uh, I went to a bar, my teacher had told me never to go to bars anymore, but if I wanted to drink, I should probably drink at home or make homemade wine through the instrument. That's a great story. But to get off, drinking is not the topic of my complaint here. I was accused of, uh, of causing alarm and annoyance with a combat brand that tore its flame about less than 12 inches. The safety was on, it was not triggered. There was, I had taken a $20 bill, I carried two wallets in my pocket, for obvious reasons to the police, I already know why I carried two wallets. They're both mine. It was the first question when I came back to town. And the people in that bar realized I had an extra 20, I was walking out with it, I wasn't going to spend it. And they all came out and like started harassing me, trying, whatever they were trying to do. I was like, "Please stop whatever you're trying to do." And I just happened to inadvertently, unintentionally point, I hope it was right now, see what I'm saying? Unintentionally, inadvertently pointed a combat brand torch flame to light cigarettes with. And it happened to be at somebody. I admit that caused an annoyance and alarm, but that's not exactly a guilty plea. Okay? I was almost brutally murdered by a police officer, much in the same way that earlier this year, many others, including some guy named Floyd, I don't want to think about Floyd, but the officer, if I may demonstrate, had, and he was a larger officer, he had his boot on my back, about right there, right there, right there on my back, right there, right there. And he started leaning forward, like that. And I, both my arms spread forward like, like this, my head tilted back like that on the ground. And, uh, all because of no reason. My second amendment is not infringed, it shall never be. It's abridged, much like yours and yours and yours and yours, all the way down along all of you. Now, if you have your button on, a finger on a nuclear war button, for example, all of our second amendments are abridged, abridged, all of them. How many of you can really have, own a automatic assault rifle, for example? I don't, I won't, I'm not supposed to, it's not legal for me to carry one or own one. Mine's abridged. Well, if you don't own one, have a permit to carry one, your second amendment is also abridged. But the second amendment shall never be infringed, whether felon, whether mentally ill, whether whatever. Nobody's second amendment is abridged, infringed, I mean, is abridged, on an individual basis. And it's not determined by one person. And not my right to vote. I had to call Brad Winstrop up finally. First, I established residency here, I'm a resident of Norwood and assistant of Ohio, of the United States of America. I was born in Milltown Regional Hospital. And I have a right to vote, and my rent or my hotel fare, if my mom pays the mortgage or not, it should not be considered poll tax or any other tax that would require me to pay anything just to walk into board of elections and say, "Here's my ideas, this is who I am, I have the right to vote." And I vote, for lack of a better choice, Joe Biden. And I think in my vote, barely in, remind, I see, I, I think that it doesn't matter here or there, whether I'm Democrat or Republican. I'm a conservative Democrat, because I believe in the second amendment. And the other concern why I left the Republican Party would be this, that no one has a right to choose death for somebody else, but every woman has a right to choose what happens to her own body. So I'm definitely not pro-life for anymore, but I'm not a pro-abortionist either, I have no problem with pro-choice. I am a Democrat, I'm a conservative Democrat, and I believe in the second amendment strongly for every citizen, maybe even extended to every resident, regardless of citizenship. So that's all I have to say, I'm not guilty. I want my Taser back. So I'm a Taser, it's a flamethrower.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
I'm gonna sit down.
Our next request is Pastor Sonny James.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, Norwood, Ohio. First want to again pay respect and homage to a great citizen in our community, and for the work that she did, Ms. Dracy, and the legacy that she has obviously birthed into her bloodline to continue to pursue the rights and fairness of others. So I want to commend the Dracy bloodline for adding to our community, to being what it is and what it can be in the future. I want to just share, I had been sharing for several weeks about January the 15th. I sent out a, an invitation that reads, "Greetings. It's definitely time for positivity and healing. Families and community peers are cordially invited to participate in Norwood, Ohio's very first public celebration honoring the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. On Friday, January the 15th, 2021, children will lead, followed by adults and community leaders, march toward the future. Help make this historical, help make this a historical celebration. Every positive-minded, non-destructive person is welcome at this historical celebration. Strollers, wheelchairs, walkers, and canes are also welcome. Everyone will be socially distanced, and masks and gloves are required. By 5:00 PM, gather near lots close to Walgreens and the Norwood Middle and High School. At 5:30, we'll pray and begin our very short but historical march up Sherman Avenue and turn left onto Montgomery Road. Around 6:00 PM, that's when the march will end, there, near City Hall and the police department, with lots of cheers and prayer. Although this entire event only covers a few brief steps, these are much-needed steps in the pursuit of continuing toward the right direction. For added precautions, participation may be limited. Banners and signs, et cetera, especially by our youth, are encouraged but subject to approval. Please contact me directly at area code 513-487-8843. Elevations Enrichment, which is a nonprofit youth program, a registered nonprofit, the youth will be out front along with other youth, and I want to tell all of our residents in Norwood, the youth are welcome, and all of us, fuddy-duddies and old folks, we will follow behind them. I want to make sure that we understand, as my time wraps up, this is very important for a lot of reasons. Number one, if you look across Cincinnati and across our country, no one's asking for permission to fill our streets. No one's coming knocking on your doors and asking, "Can you tell me if I can sit at the back of the bus or the front?" They're taking what they believe, right, wrong, or indifferent, the right to exercise their right. I've intentionally not allowed a lot of my peers to be a part of this march, because I want this march basically to signify who we are as a community, who we are as a people, a very positive step in the right direction. So I'm asking Norwood to participate. I'm asking, first let me say, I want to thank our chief of police for responding to me via email today, and we've had dialogue back and forth. Then that further led to the safety director communicating. Whatever obstacles we need to make or eliminate, so that this can happen in a positive way, I'm asking that we do that as a community. Because people will be watching, and they're going to see Norwood, and I'm chanting and rooting that they're going to see the Norwood that I believe in. So please, help this make, make this historical event that we can show the country how awesome it is that we can come together in spite of these terrible times, and we can show one love, one faith. And we'll have different chants on the march. For instance, "What do we have?", and they'll chant, "I have a dream." Who are we? One nation under God. And then the Elevations famous chant is, that they'll be doing as well, is, "Be the change", and the crowd will yell, "I am the change." So please come and support, it's going to be an awesome time, and the whole city will be watching us, and people abroad, not abroad, but all over. If you have any questions, please give me a call, I'm always available. God bless you all, and let's make Norwood a great, great place for black people and all people, because we've got to live together. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor James.
Moving on, item J, reports of standing committees of council, we don't have any this evening. Item K, third reading of ordinances and resolutions, we don't have any as well. That moves us to item L1, second reading of ordinances and resolutions. Item L1, resolution authorizing the city of Norwood to purchase and use employee dishonesty and faithful performance duty policy through public entities pools, PEP. Mr. Thompson.
We have the second reading of this ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Thompson to have the second reading. Mr. Gabbard.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Gabbard. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, the motion passes. Mrs. Williams, we have the second reading.
Resolution authorizing the city of Norwood to purchase and use employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy through public entities pool.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Moving on to item M, introductory reading of ordinances and resolutions. Item M1, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners to provide public safety, emergency dispatch services to the city of Norwood and declare an emergency. Mr. Dracy.
I'd like to make a motion to have one reading, and, as well as an amendment to remove declaring an emergency.
We have a motion by Mr. Dracy to have the first reading and to remove the declaring an emergency.
You gotta do the amendment first. Motion to amend before.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to amend this ordinance and remove declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. It's a motion by Mr. Dracy, do I have a second? Mr. Kelch?
I'll second.
So the motion on the floor, the motion by Mr. Dracy, second by Mr. Kelch, is to have one reading and amend it to remove the declaring an emergency.
The motion would be to amend it to remove Section 3 and that part of the caption that says.
Just amend. I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I believe what he's, the, the first step is to amend the, to amend the ordinance, is a motion to amend the ordinance. If that passes, then council votes on whether to have readings, and if so, how many. But the motion would basically be to amend the ordinance to delete Section 3, and then to delete from the caption and declaring an emergency. Is that, I believe that's, okay.
Okay.
You're asking for discussion?
It is Mr. Kelch.
We don't have a second.
Any discussion?
Is there a second?
Mr. Kelch, second. Any discussion? Mr. Donardo.
Yeah. Is the, um, the declaring an emergency, when this ordinance was put together, was that only because one of the possibility to have three readings all tonight?
Is that a question, too?
Yeah, it's a question.
To Mr. Mayor?
I suppose whoever wrote it. Ultimately, to Mr. Moore.
I will take a moment to speak on behalf, I believe on behalf of the mayor, as a part of this, but the request is to have an, have an ordinance that declares an emergency. The purpose, there's a difference between the three readings and the emergency clause. The emergency clause means primarily that if the ordinance passes, as soon as it's signed by the mayor, or the time the sign passes and it goes into effect, it becomes effective at that moment. Usually, there's a waiting period after an ordinance is passed and signed, and I can never remember if it's 30 days or 60 days. But basically, if we're going to do a contract that is going to go into effect on February 1st, the ordinance should pass and be effective immediately so the city, so the mayor can actually enter that contract before February 1st. So that's the reason for the emergency clause. The three readings is separate. You don't need an emergency clause to have all three readings in one meeting. If you have an emergency clause, you can have all three readings in one meeting, where you can still stretch it out over several meetings. And the emergency clause basically says it goes into effect as soon as it's, as soon as it's passed and signed.
I have a follow-up, please.
Mr. Donardo.
It's not a question, more a comment, I guess. If we go backwards from the end of Feb, when we would need to, I guess, pass a plan, that would put it pretty tight, I think almost too tight, but having the emergency clause there does mean if this council did vote to move dispatch, then they could effectively bake that into whatever changes they wanted in the plan. So I think keeping the emergency, in my mind, or I'm going to vote for not, for, I'm going to vote in a way that keeps the declaration of an emergency clause in there, because I think that it, it allows us to do whatever, whatever we decide on floor, to bake it into the plan. If we had to wait 30 days, then I think Mr. Stith would be kind of like, "Well, what am I going to do for the end of February to put it into the plan?" So.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think having the emergency clause also prevents residents from speaking out and doing petition and removing this ordinance, am I correct?
Mr. Moore.
That is correct. If there's an emergency clause, it means that there, because for most, for an ordinance without one, there's a period, and I don't remember off the top of my head, there's a period that where residents can gather, if they gather sufficient signatures, and again, I have no clue what that number is, and put a referendum on the ballot to declare it, to unpass the ordinance if it passes, yeah.
So if I can continue, because that was just a question. That's part of the reasoning, I believe, here, and I'll leave that to Mr. Dracy, to remove the emergency clause, to in that event it passes, allow the residents to have that
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Dracy.
Mr. Kelch is right. I, I feel that this decision was taken out of the public's hands once already, and I'd like to not see it taken out of their hands a second time, if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Mr. Gabbard.
Question through the chair to the law director, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore, if, say, this particular ordinance was rejected, voted down, I mean, this is ultimately the mayor's decision. So if the mayor says, "We're, we're closing that department," then does not, the 911 communications, by fault, because we don't have one, because we dissolved it, by fault, would just go to the county anyway, right?
Mr. Moore.
I really don't know what happens. I mean, if the mayor basically lays off everybody in the communication center, and we don't have anybody there to answer phones, I'm not exact, I believe there's some arrangement whereby the county takes our calls, if our dispatch center is, our communication center is unavailable. Now, how long they're going to do that, and what happens as far as do we get billed, and how much, and I have, I have no clue how that would play out.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Gabbard.
I've been against this from the beginning, and I've been very vocal about it, but, that being said, I think that we have talked about this, this might be our fourth meeting, that we've had conversation on this. We've all had lots of residents reach out to us through our, our emails, potential petitions that are being circulated, and if, and the mayor's, you know, sent us a message early on saying that effective February 1st, this would go into effect. We have folks that are now kind of in limbo. They, they don't know if they're going to have jobs, they're looking for jobs, are they going to be bumping jobs? So... So with that being said, I think that we should have all three readings tonight, with or without the emergencies, probably not my real big issue here, but we should have all three readings tonight and have a vote on this for the employees, so they know either it's up or down. Let them know, so they can start on with their lives, one way or the other, and figure this out. But I think by prolonging this, another meeting or two is a disservice to the people that are ultimately losing their jobs. And I think that it's just like continually picking a scab at them. And so I would recommend that we have all three readings tonight and give these folks an up and down.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Any further discussion? Mr. Dracy.
This is just the motion to remove the declaration, correct? Not the motion to have the readings? Yes.
This was a motion to remove the declaration.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Mr. Gabbard.
No.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
No.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
Mr. Brayden.
No.
All members present voting, we have five noes, two ayes. Motion fails. Mr. Gabbard.
We make a motion, we have all three readings.
We have a motion by Mr. Gabbard to have all three readings. Mr. Donardo.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Dracy.
I've said a lot on this, and I still 100% do not support getting rid of our dispatch center. I've brought numbers in. I've been chastised over my numbers, which is okay, that's, well, that's what we're here for, is to have this discussion, I guess. One thing I will ask the mayor is to put this on hold, so that we're not doing this so quickly, and set up a review board, and include some citizens in it, so that we can review our options. Let's step on the brakes a little bit. Let's not be so hasty. We've already got a budget laid out for 2021 that includes dispatch and our emergency center. There's no reason to be hasty on this. We're looking at at least $100,000 to upgrade the firehouse in order to support the equipment for Hamilton County. I think, you know, I'm gonna make the last plea to the mayor, just to step the brakes a little bit, and set up a review board that includes different people within the city, residents, council members, administration staff, just so that we can sit down, discuss it, and see where our options are at.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Mr. Gabbard.
I would agree with Mr. Dracy. I would also implore the mayor to reconsider and let us do a review. I think that it's gonna cost us a lot more than we probably expected. It's already come to my attention that this is becoming quite a fiasco. Because these are union positions, they can bump. And so we're gonna, you know, potentially have people move in, all these, there's gonna be a bunch of different moves from every department, people bumping this one, bumping that one. And because of that, you know, we're gonna have a lot of positions that we've gotta pay to retrain to go through all that as well. And like I said, I made the motion to have all three readings, so we can get to the ordinance and vote up and down. I'm voting against the ordinance. I just think that we need to give the respect to the people, or to the employees, to let them know whether it's gonna be up or down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Anyone else? We have a motion by Mr. Gabbard, second by Mr. Donardo, to suspend the rules and have all three readings. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, we have six ayes, one no. Motion passes. And we have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners to provide public safety emergency dispatch services to the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contractual agreement with the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners to provide public safety emergency dispatch services to the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners to provide public safety emergency dispatch services to the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the ordinance be passed.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel, that the ordinance be passed. May I have a second? Mr. Donardo?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Donardo. Any discussion? Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, as Mr. Gabbard alluded to, I mean, ultimately, the decision's been made. It's gonna happen, I mean, Hamilton County is able to, if we stop taking calls, they're ready and able to pick up any calls that we stop taking, whether it would have been for a short period of time, or if we just stopped taking calls permanently. They're ready to take them over. They're just going to bill us for them, any calls that they get in. Passing this ordinance today allows us to at least set the city in the best position possible, so that we can really have language together going into it, and we're not, you know, there's not some uncertainty or struggle on, you know, how the county commissioners handle it, how the communication center handles it. It allows the agreement to go into place and be ready to go. So, I mean, I'm voting for it, just for that reason alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. Gabbard, Mr. Dracy, you know, definitely, definitely hit the nail on the head and put it very clear. And I want to say, I would vote a no on this ordinance, and I would, you know, highly recommend everybody else fall asleep and do so. Entering this contract, I don't think is in the best interest for Norwood. I've received an overwhelming amount of communication from residents that I represent against this. And I received one, it's only not even my word, just one communication, I think we were all on that, for somebody supporting getting rid of dispatch. I mean, you know, this is an important job we have here. We are the resident's mouthpiece. We are their voice here in creating policy for the city. And when I took this position, it was kinda giving me advice by somebody, you know, hey, just listen to your residents, you know, respond to your residents, and make a concerted effort to fight for your residents. And that's what I believe that we've done here, pretty valiantly, over the course of four meetings, I think like Mr. Gabbard said. So I would like to second that, that we do take our time on this, and we do look into this, and we don't just make hasty decisions. And we actually listen to the people of Norwood. I think that they're very comfortable with the dispatch center we have. I don't think they have at all an interest to change. This has been quite an abrupt decision to change this service, and it's such an important, underappreciated service that we have, and I just, you know, hate, I don't know what comes for every other service we have, especially our safety services. Where do we go from here? Where does it stop? What's the next move? So I would like to ask everybody else, you know, fall asleep, vote no on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Dracy.
I can't say much more than what Mr. Kelch said. You know, we are elected as the mouthpiece, as he said. And, you know, I cannot believe the overwhelming support that I've seen from this community for one service. The people that work within the communication center here in Norwood are absolutely amazing. They do a fantastic job. You know, we're gonna lose those services when we go to Hamilton County. And I, again, I still urge the mayor to pump the brakes a little bit and set up a committee to look it over first. This is not a decision that should come as quickly as it has come. You know, my grandma had fought for public services the entire time she was on council. She was sitting in the same spot many times as I am. And, you know, when I talk to her about certain things that have been going on here, you know, she just kept telling me to fight for the residents, to fight the good fight. And, you know, that's what I feel I'm doing right here, is I'm fighting the good fight.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Please call the roll, Mrs. Williams.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
No.
Mr. Dracy.
No.
Mr. Kelch.
No.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting, we have four ayes, three noes. Motion fails. You have to have six. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So because, I mean, I think you just alluded to, because this ordinance had an emergency clause on it, it required five votes to pass. There were only four, so it failed. You know, I don't know if anybody, I'd like to hear, I mean, maybe from the mayor, like, what happens next? Is he gonna have an ordinance without an emergency clause? Will you have a special meeting? Just curious, kind of, if there's any thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Mr. Mayor.
I'm not exactly sure how, where I'll go with it right now. I'm so impressed that we live in Beverly Hills, that we have so much money that we can just continue. And the reason for the timing of this is, I'm pretty sure council members know that we're in a fiscal emergency, and that there's a financial recovery commission that actually dictates what the city can spend its money on and not. And we have to have that in place by March. We have to have that figured out. So it's not just pumping the brakes, because I have a very finite timeline that I have to get things done. And I can't pump the brakes and say, let's give this a couple more months, because the Financial Recovery Commission, the State Auditor's Office, they don't care about the city of Norwood, and when we make positive changes, all they care is to make sure the numbers are all just right, just lining up right. So it's absolutely true that I've been working with the unions for the last few months, because I knew this was gonna be a major challenge, a hurdle. We've got positions in place, five positions that we're posting now. There's eight employees in there, so there's three employees that are going to potentially bump and move people around. And there is going to be bumping, but that happens every time in the city when somebody moves, when somebody changes. When a person leaves a position in the city, another person has the ability to bump into that position, their position opens, another person bumps in, their position bumps. So that's, it's not abnormal for that to happen. That's just part of the process. That's the environment that we work in. It's a union environment, it's a civil service environment. I've been working with the unions, and you guys, you keep on hearing, this is like, we're going so fast on this, we're going so fast on this. Doesn't feel like that to me. It's been six months in the making. And even when it came to council, it was three months prior to it coming to council, I'd already started, the chiefs had pulled me aside and said, "This is what we need to be doing." I got with the auditor's office. So this has been a long way coming. It's not like, it's not like this just got thrown out there, just because the public got stirred up, boiled up, and they're, but this is not, I look at this as really as the federal government, when they pay $800 for a hammer. And you go, "Why'd you pay $800 for a hammer?" Well, because some senator over here had some friends, and that's why they did it. And that's sort of what I look at with this, is like, this is, we're overspending. We're paying a tax for the Hamilton County Communication Center. All of the residents of the city of Norwood are paying those taxes to run the Hamilton County Communication Center. And then we're putting money that we should be putting into streets, and parks, and recreation centers, and community buildings. We should be putting, but we're not, we're putting that into our dispatch center, which is becoming antiquated as we speak. Every day, the technology becomes antiquated, and we're constantly putting more money, and more money, and more money into it. And that's really the whole driving factor behind this. And I recognize that there are people out there getting petitions, and they're going on Facebook, and anybody in the world can post on Facebook and then try to get petitions. But quite frankly, this council was put in place to represent those people and to make tough decisions. And this is a tough decision. It's a decision between $1.2 million and what we, when we go to Hamilton County, where we will be there. We're looking at a contract right now that says, "Hamilton County for 2021, $104,313 compared to $1.2 million." And I recognize, that's not all in, but that's a major portion of it. But I just have a hard time understanding how council members can say, "This is not the right move." It gives us more resources, it takes away a lot of the capital expenses that are coming at us constantly, it takes away so many things that are actual problems for the city every year, every other year. It gets rid of some of those problems and provides some solutions. And when the police chief and the fire chief say, "This is the right move," I don't understand how seven council members can say, "We don't agree with you guys, although this is your career, and it's their job to provide the level of service to us as emergency services." But we're willing, as seven members, willing to say, "Sorry, we're smarter than you, and we're willing to pay the extra money, we're willing to spend the extra money, because we wanna keep these eight full-time employees working for the city of Norwood." Wait, I should say, three full-time employees, because we already got positions for the five employees that are there, it's three part-time, or three full-time employees. So I just have a hard time with that. Where I go from here? I mean, I would, I would ask the council that this gets put on for one reading tonight, that somebody makes a motion, need one reading, and then I'll try to do, I guess, another special meeting or something. I am up against a deadline with the Financial Recovery Commission. That's one of the reasons why these timelines and these dates were put in place. These dates were also put in place because I sat down with the union a long time ago, and I said, "This is what we're trying to do." And I looked at the union contracts, and I said, "Let's look at our timelines for this. How much time do you have to give it? How long is it gonna take to post it?" We did an MOU with, we did an MOU already with the union to try to facilitate the training that it's gonna take to get these people moved, and to get everybody trained up and going right. The union's already signed that MOU. Now, I realize, they don't want this to happen, they don't wanna lose five or eight people in their union, but they're gonna lose a couple people in their union, but they've been very willing to listen and to understand the reasoning why. Is it perfect for them? No. But we're working through that, and we're working with the union contract to make this all happen and go the right way. So I'm discouraged, I'm sort of disgusted, because I really feel like it is an idea of just, you know, we can save, we can save money, we can put money into other things that are important to the city, important to the residents. We can have more for our residents, but we're not willing to take this step. So let's just keep stumbling along like we've done for many years when it comes to finances. And I think it's just, I think it's the wrong decision, and I'll have to, I mean, my recommendation would be do one reading, and then I'll have to go back and sit in my office and scratch my head and figure out where I go with this council and how I make things happen.
Thank you, Pastor. Anyone else? Mr. Thompson.
A couple things, I just wanted to clarify. You mentioned that seven council members voted against it, and in fact, it was.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Right against it. Second thing, I would motion, we have one reading. Are we allowed to do that, even though we've already voted against it?
I think you need to have a motion for reconsideration. Is that, I think, James, it actually has done this once before. I've never made that motion, but I think that that's what is a motion for reconsideration, and then the options would be just have one reading, or make a motion to amend, to take out the emergency clause and pass it. But you don't have six votes, you probably wouldn't have six votes to suspend the rules. But, yeah, I think you need to make a motion to reconsider an item.
Well, the thing is.
Mr. Bunsel.
So only somebody that voted in, against, essentially, they voted, they sided with the negative, or that caused it not to pass, it would be, one of those people, I'm pretty sure, has to make it according to our council rules. Or else we could just keep making motions to reconsider every time something fails. It'd have to be somebody that changes their mind, and essentially, they don't have to change their mind, but... change their mind, but they would have to make the motion. Another option would be that we could potentially do a recess. The ordinance could be amended to remove the emergency clause, we could come back in session, amend the agenda to add the ordinance without the emergency clause to the agenda, and then do one reading of it. So that is an option. A little bit more complicated, but it's there.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsel. Mr. Moore.
That option seems to me, I understand the logic behind it, but because it seems designed to avoid the whole point of the rules, I'm not so sure that it's valid. And off the top of my head, I couldn't say one way or the other to, you know, oh, here's, we'll mark it up, we're not gonna amend it, the council didn't want to amend it, but I'm gonna just amend it, and then after, and then we'll amend the agenda to add this marked-up version to reconsider. That, to me, seems to violate at least the spirit of the rules, and so I don't really have a lot of confidence. I can't say for sure that that would be a valid step to take.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Bonsel. Mr. Kelch, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would like to also point out, too, that through some of our conversation, and I mean, we can go back, meetings on this, it was discussed that we have a budget about to be in play with the communications that are on there. I know I explicitly asked that, is this stopping us from getting off fiscal recovery? And it was answered, no. So what I think we do from here, it failed. We played it out, we voted. It failed. I think from here, we move on. I think that's a plan we have maybe for next year. The mayor goes and has a committee about it, he talks to people about it, he puts out what he wants to do, and sends that message to the residents, hears from residents, and we move on to that. You know, revisit it again next year, tabling it as such, with the rules of our council. I feel like that's the only other option. It failed, revisit later, keep the dispatch center where it is, we have money put aside for it. It's not stopping us from getting off fiscal emergency, so I really don't see the sell for panic. I mean, yeah, there's some savings there, where, if you're looking at it from a financial aspect, but it's varying degrees of savings from what we've been given. So I think, again, we let it stand. It's a good time for the administration, the chiefs, meet, talk about it, talk with residents, hear from people about it, and then revisit this at a later date.
Thank you, Ms. Kelch. So my understanding, Mr. Moore, if someone who didn't vote, someone who had to have voted in the negative to bring it up for reconsideration, if not, then we have to move on. Correct? Mr. Bonsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, I'm fine moving on. It sounds like we'll probably have some special meetings, so we can just come back here, I guess, and keep considering, keep voting on it. I would just disagree with the law director on his interpretation, only because, you know, it's not, these are rules of council, they're rules that we passed. And it would take a majority vote to amend the agenda to add another ordinance to the agenda anyways, that doesn't have the emergency clause in it. So I guess I really don't see how, I mean, it substantially changes the ordinance by taking the emergency clause out, in my opinion. But I still think it could be an option, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsel. No further motions? Then we'll move on. Move on to item N, administrative reports. Mayor Snyder.
Thank you. Couple of interesting things going on with the city. One of the things is, we had a meeting, the administration had a meeting with the engineering firm that we use quite a bit, talking about street plans, talking about what streets we'll be trying to look at for the next couple of years, trying to put together a five-year plan, and something that can be discussed. We did receive the street survey back, so we have some information that we're trying to work off of, and then put together a five-year plan, but it takes money to do streets. I know that's not a priority to you guys, so. The other thing was Elm Avenue, Elm Avenue, the storm sewage problem, or the stormwater problem there. We had a discussion about maybe a much more simple fix to that problem, and we're looking for engineering to give us some estimates to try to eliminate that project, that problem, without going through MSD, and without going through the Ohio EPA, and without going through everybody. But that would be, you know, we potentially could use some funding, some outside funding for that, but potentially, we would not, and that would be something that the city would have to pay for. Clearly, we're gonna have to pay for the engineering and all those other parts, but again, I'm not sure where we'll go with that, depending on where the engineering estimates come in and what we can do, because the city doesn't have money sitting around just to do projects like that. So we'll have to figure that out. Like I said, if we're not using MSD, and we're not using the Ohio EPA to do that work, and the burden falls completely on the city's operating expenses. So we do have some stormwater funds that come in that we could use for matching, but we're not, we really wouldn't be applying for grants, because we'd be self-funding that stuff, too. The next part is the Financial Recovery Commission meeting, and this is the group that dictates what we can spend money on and not what we cannot spend money on. They have a meeting, we have a meeting tomorrow morning, and we'll be going through the plan that needs to be put in place by March, and what the city's funding, what we're gonna be able to fund and not be able to fund, I guess, and we'll try to figure that out. We've got a capital improvement plan that we'll get in front of them. All of that's money that comes out of our operating accounts also, so maybe, I guess, that capital improvement plan, I'll have to look at that again before the meeting tomorrow at 10:00. And then, of course, you know, all of that has to be into them and approved, and the budget has to be approved in March for the next year, which would then, if, I don't, I guess, maybe you're going to give an update on where we are on trying to get out of financial, on the fiscal emergency. I know we've made a lot of strides getting out of the fiscal emergency, but they're still in, they're still in charge of our budget and what we can and can't do, so it'll be an interesting discussion tomorrow. And then, the Board of Health meeting, I met with the Board of Health the other day, and, you know, for COVID stuff, we've got, we've lost nine residents for the city of Norwood with COVID. We've got 1,053 cases right now. The vaccine is coming out, and the health department is working with the groups that they can work on right now. It looks like for just, you know, the general population, it's gonna be probably the end of February or March before some of us are getting vaccinated. So all of that information is out there, you can see that on all the different news channels, of what sort of the plan is. The Board of Health is looking at doing clinics on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Saturdays from like 10:00 until 2:00, and trying to, they're trying to get that all organized and making sure that we have everything squared away there. So I do think the Board of Health will be a huge asset to us. And then, the C Click Fix is up in an operational, that is, the app that you can download onto your phone, and report a pothole or report any challenges like that. I know, I think they did five tons of blacktop mix over the last week, using the new blacktop trailer, which keeps it heated up, which means if they're, if they can get more, put it in the trailer, and then it sits in the garage, basically heated up the whole time. So at the end of the day, if they're not able to use every bit of that blacktop, they don't just take it behind Public Works and dump it out to make sure it doesn't harden up, they're able to use that the next day, which is really nice. And that was a purchase we made just this last year. So there's a lot of things that could be done, and some things that can't be done, I guess. That's about it for the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Anyone have any questions for Mayor Snyder? Mr. Kelch.
I had got a question recently, I've heard, and other people have heard, that Lincoln Avenue is getting done in West Norwood, in my ward. Is there a reason why that street got picked in our ward versus other streets that's kind of less traveled than others?
Mr. Mayor.
It was rated high on the list, and it was in the Financial Recovery Plan from the previous administration's time, when they were putting it on there. So it stayed on there. I don't know that it'll get done or not. There was some discussion on some water mains that need to be replaced under certain streets, and there's clearly no reason to replace water main, or replace the driving surface if the water main is gonna cause problems. So we really have to look at that again and make sure, I mean, the streets that have been paved so far were streets, all we did was try to push them forward and keep moving with them, but there are streets that were chosen previously. On the other hand, I will say that Lincoln rated very high, Regent rated very high, and I think Slane was another street that was on the list that rated very high as in need from the engineering crew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Moving on to item O, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? No unfinished business? We'll move on to item P, new business, any new business? Mr. Dracy.
I've got a few things here. If the members of the Housing, Health, and Public Safety Committee could at least email me at least two or three good Mondays that we can meet up in February to have a meeting. I'd like to have a meeting with members of the Nuisance Ordinance Task Force, just to kind of touch base with them and discuss some things regarding the ordinance with them. And then, I'll come in with some dates, next meeting, depending on what dates I get. Monday's about the only day that I could really meet. The second thing that I noticed is that the mayor had not mentioned anything about the water department tonight, and I, we'll get to that communication, however, there's not gonna be any discussion there, because it's only a communication. But the communication's basically gonna show that we're raising our water rates to 3.75%. So not only are we, you know, charging for every time that we pay now, residents are charged a fee now every time they pay, but we're raising the water rates as well, along with trying to get rid of dispatch. It's, it seems like blow after blow for the residents lately, so. Just disheartened that we're putting a lot of this on the residents at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Mr. Brayden.
Oh, thank you. I just want to respond to, as far as the water rates go, that comes from the city of Cincinnati, that don't come from the city of Norwood. They tell us when they're gonna raise those rates, and if I'm correct, that is not up to us. They tell us that they're raising our rates, and basically, they're just informing us that they're doing that. So it's not something that we, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Anyone else? Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah, I'd like to call an economic development meeting for, actually, I'm available any night next week, if the other committee members have a particular night that might be the best, I mean, next Tuesday.
We have a finance committee.
Next committee, or finance committee?
Or the Tuesday?
On which day?
On the 19th.
That's next Tuesday. What time is your finance meeting?
7:30, I'll check.
7:30?
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
You want to do a 6 o'clock?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Be good, so we can double up on them? I'd like to call, finance committee, I'd like to call an economic development committee for next Tuesday, the 19th, at 6:00 PM, please.
6:00 PM. And then finances at 7:30. Correct? Anyone else? Any more new business? Mr. Gabbard.
Earlier, we did a proclamation, or, yeah, proclamation in honor of Mrs. Dracy, and I just wanted to say a couple words about Mrs. Dracy and what an example she was to me. When I first threw my hat in the political realm, back around 1999, 2000, or something like that, I'm getting old, she was one of the first to kind of pull me aside and share her experiences, share the fact that every vote counts, share the fact that, as Matt alluded to, to fight for the people, but to always show respect, even on council floor. And I know that I've not always done that, but it's something that I think about, is even though we disagree, we still need to be respectful about that, and just agree to disagree. We're not always gonna think the same, and we need to understand that. And sometimes we make the right choice, maybe sometimes we make the bad. So she taught me a lot about that, and I would say that Helen Dracy's fingerprints are really all over this city. And she was a good woman, and something that, she's definitely a woman that Norwood's gonna miss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Any more new business? Anyone else? Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to put out the Parks Committee, we usually try to meet on the second Wednesday. We will not be able to meet tomorrow, which is the 13th. And due to COVID-19, our resting schedule gets a little random, so I'm gonna look at potentially the 27th as a meet date. And I'd like to see if the committee members would be kind of flexible and work with me there on that a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kelch. Anyone else?
Thank you, and we'll move on to Communications.
27.
Communications, Q1, Safety Service Director, John Murphy, regarding the water rates.
Mrs. Williams.
Communication dated January 4th of 2021 to Mr. Ken Miracle and members of Norwood City Council regarding water rates. Dear President and members of Norwood City Council, I have enclosed a letter, a copy of the letter from the city of Cincinnati, raising the water meter rates to the city of Norwood by 3.75%. Ordinance 20-1992 states, "The Director of Public Service shall levy and assess charges in a sufficient amount to pay the current operating expenses and costs of permanent improvements to the city waterworks or water system on an annual basis. The Director of Public Service shall notify council in written form of every increase in water charges or assessments, at least 30, prior to the implementation of that time. With regard to the above, the city of Norwood water rates will be increased by 3.75%. We are hopeful to continue to improve our water service throughout the city, and keeping rates in line with what the city is being charged is of the utmost importance. Sincerely, John P. Murphy, Safety Service Director."
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bonsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the letter be received and filed.
Motion by Mr. Bonsel to receive and file the letter. May I have a second? Mr. Thompson? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item Q2, Clerk of Courts, regarding the December mayor's court files.
Letter dated December 2020, Mayor Schneider. Here are the ticket totals heard in Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of December 2020. Traffic 36, misdemeanors 5, parkers 8, stays 4. The total tickets processed for the month of December 2020 from Norwood Police and other Norwood departments. Traffic 145, misdemeanors 6, parkers 155, others 0. Correction from November 2020, parking tickets issued listed as 1, corrected number 139. Respectfully, Andrew Conlin, Clerk of Courts, City of Norwood, Ohio.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Donardo.
I'll make a motion that we receive this.
Motion by Mr. Donardo to receive and file. Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. Motion passes. Moving on to item Q3 from the Law Department.
Mr. President. If I could, and I hope council will agree to this, I'd just ask that, usually I attach a cover letter that says, don't read the whole letter, just, I'd like to say a couple of words, just receive and file it as if read. So if that's okay?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we receive and file this letter as if read.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Can allow the law director to say a few things.
To receive and file as if read and allow the law director to say a few things. Mr. Brayden.
I'll start with that.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. The motion passes. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, it's a long letter and nobody cares to hear all of it. I appreciate those who have read it, just to get a sense. The Law Department is a very, very strange place. The kinds of issues that come across our desk are kind of stunning. And I have to say, as I was thinking about tonight's meeting, it had reached such a normal, a sense of normal that I totally forgot about the beginning of the year, the first few months of the year, where the questions we got were, how does, and I had this, I was reminded of a conversation I have. One of the books I edit is State and Local Government. We just got the, we got the manuscript for the 10th edition this summer. But during the conversations I was having with the authors before the manuscript came in, I was talking about the issues facing state and local government right now. And it was, we were in March, we closed. The city closed, more or less. I mean, City Hall closed, the meetings were suspended, court was suspended. And those are fundamental questions. How do you function as a city if the doors aren't open? Because generally, when you change the way a process works in the government, you put some thought, there's like, there's some effort, there's some thought. There's a lot of people that get involved. And it was, you know, hey, everything's closing. Okay, what do we do with the Water Department? What do we do with, with the Clerk of Courts? What do we do with people that have to get building permits? What do we do with? It's those kinds of questions. This is a very, very unusual year. Along those lines, Mayor's Court has, the, you know, it was closed for a while and the volume is down significantly. I did get the letter from the Clerk of Courts. I wanted to pass it on with the annual totals, just the, the highlights of that. For this year, the Clerk of Courts handled 1,148 traffic tickets, nine DUIs, 71 misdemeanors and five others. And there were hundreds of recites, which is people that didn't show up for court. And then somebody's got to recite them. We do a lot of that. We do a lot of, we have a lot of cases that go downtown. Mr. Gary last week was down, was supposed to have three trials in one day. We had a, one particular news, property nuisance case that has been bubbling through the system for five months and she didn't show again. And so it's that kind of thing. We spend a lot of time on what should be little, simple things. But I just want to say, I, I appreciate this year, we've had a lot of requests on, really, we were in the middle of trying to figure out, how do we do this contract thing? How do we COVID things? Mural research and chronic nuisance ordinance research. I mean, these are big topics that take a lot of work. And they were all coming at once. And I just want to say, express my appreciation. Well, Mr. Gary and TA Brown, who are absolutely outstanding people, I want to express my appreciation to the new administration and all of the new members of council. And we've had new executive leaders, you know, appointed positions that I think we have worked together in a positive way, in a way we're not, you know, that it can be backbiting and gotcha. And I think it's been very much a sense of what can we do to move the city forward? How we can work together on the policymakers' choice of what's the next right step for the city? How do we make sure we do it well, do it the right way? And I, and I just want to say my thanks to all the new people that have come in over the last year, which there are a lot, for their willingness to, to listen, their willingness to, you know, take their time with us so we understand what they want to do and to figure out that sometimes it takes times to get things done. It's been a really busy year. If any of us got any questions, I can only think of a thousand other things to mention. But if anybody's got any questions, we're more than happy to answer.
Mr. Dracy has a question.
I'm sorry. I had a lot of things running through my head during new business. I wanted to make an announcement during new business that I have placed an application process for the Nuisance Appeals Board up on the council website along with the Facebook, the Norwood Facebook, city web, Facebook page. I've also placed a link to them on my page as well. If I can get some of these council members here to, to share that as well and get the word out that we're looking for resumes. They'll be accepted until January 27th. And then council here as a body will go over them.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Any questions for, for Mr. Moore? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the law director for being here and just applaud the Law Department for another great year. We get a tremendous value in the city from our Law Department, our Law Director Keith Moore, our Assistant Law Director Tim Gary Jr., and then our Law Secretary TA Brown. And I don't, it's, I know residents don't see it if you're not really super, I guess, involved at the city. But there is, and the Law Department just helps make the city keep going. And the experience that they bring is, I mean, we're very, very well-served by it. So I just want to thank them. Thank you for your all fiscal responsibility as you all do your job and look forward to another great year this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Moore. Moving on to item S, adjournment. May I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Bonzel. May I have a second? May I have a second? Mr. Kelsey. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
No.
Mr. Kelsey.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, we have six sides, one to help. We are adjourned.